Okay, go ahead and call the meeting to order. All rise and tell me the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this edition of the Board of Commissioners meeting, the first one of 2021. Finally, glad to put 2020 to bed. I want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting, and if you do address the Board, to please identify yourself with your name and your address prior to speaking. And this is a public meeting, and we are recording it both via audio and visually. And awards, recognitions, and correspondence. We're going to do the employee of the quarter. That is not it.
It's in the red folder.
I got it now. Is there a letter I'm supposed to?
The last document.
The last document, okay. All right, got it. Okay, so this is for the employee of the quarter, and the Yumitilla County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who serve the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively, with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. In that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination letter from your peers that warranted this recognition. Congratulations. Fourth Quarter 2020 Employee Award. For as long as I have known Stephanie—sorry. You've been tricked. And if you turn around, there's— She has always had an amazing disposition, always upbeat and joyful, no matter what is going on. I have never had anything but great experiences working with her regarding anything that I needed assistance for. She has always treated everyone with respect and helpfulness, rare qualities, especially during the times we live in. Because of these great attributes and more, I nominate Stephanie Barnett as Employee of the Quarter. I cannot think of anyone more deserving. Stephanie always has a welcoming smile on her face and always goes out of her way to help. Congratulations, Stephanie. Well deserved.
Woo! Do a selfie. Do a selfie.
I have—
This is an extra.
That's an extra, okay.
Yeah, certificate. If you would—when you hold that up, if you would mind, perfect.
Does Stephanie have to show you how to run that, too?
I was showing jazz, eh? She's cheesy. She just can't find somebody. Thank you.
Congratulations. And you also get eight hours of paid time off, too.
And a parking spot.
And a parking spot. All right. Congratulations. I can't shake your hand, but, you know.
Thank you for everything. Yeah. Bye.
Okay, any other awards or recognitions? Okay, hearing none. Approval of the minutes to the previous meeting?
So moved.
Okay, who is that?
That was Dan.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any additions to the agenda?
Is that the word for the—can't—
Uh, yeah, the— The cameras for the jail? Is that on here?
No. I didn't have it. What was that?
Oh, it's—so it's not in here?
No, we don't have any documents.
Okay. No, that's my stuff. It would have been an S.
All I saw was an email—
That's the only thing I've seen.
—Robert and—I don't—I don't have the information, so—
So we don't have any information on it?
Robert would—Robert and, uh, Captain Hurry have—
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have any documents.
Okay.
There weren't any before, so that's all.
Okay, now is—uh, we'll get to that in a minute, but now on the agenda, it's time for public input and recognition of visitors. And I just met with some people outside. I thought they were going to call in and read a document. Are you on the line?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, we can hear you, so, uh, please state your name for the record and your address.
Sarah Wilcox, 2195 East Beatrice Avenue, Hermiston, Oregon 97838.
Okay, can the other two commissioners hear the—the conversation?
Not very well.
No, no, I sure can't.
Okay. Uh, do we have IT on the line? Can they help us with the connection?
Okay. Here, watch where I do this.
Okay.
I turned that volume up. Is—it maybe have them say something else?
Okay. Can you—can you say your name again for me, please?
Sarah Wilcox, 2195 East Beatrice Avenue, Hermiston, Oregon 97838.
Okay. So—okay, sounds like we can all hear you now. So what I'm going to ask you to do is I'm going to ask you to read the letter, and then I'll have you drop it off so we can have it for the permanent record, if you're still in the area.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and read your letter, please.
Okay. So respectfully, I just want to bring to all of your attention that the slogan at the top of your Yumitilla County website page says, "To serve the citizens of Yumitilla County efficiently and effectively." And gentlemen, and if there's any ladies, I'd just like to, you know, say, please explain how that is happening when a large majority of our citizens are at risk of losing their businesses or going bankrupt, having mental health issues from immense stress and lack of human and social interaction, have physical issues from lack of real care as opposed to money-driven care because of COVID payouts to medical institutions. We do understand the virus is real. We're not saying that it isn't. This is the flu, and other sicknesses are real. But the way it's being handled, with Governor Brown being allowed to break many constitutional laws, we believe that needs to stop. And I'd like to read the, um, constitutional laws that we believe are being broken, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. Article, um, 10A, Section 1, Clause 4. At the time, the governor invokes the provisions of this article under subsection 3 of this section, the governor shall issue a proclamation convening the Legislative Assembly under Section 12, Article, uh, 10 of this Constitution. Unless—if you choose to research this article, you yourselves will find that unless reasons are not valid to the timeline that Brown has acted within, we have not had the legislature convene for the purpose to satisfy this constitutional obligation. Hence, the people have been left to the hands of one and void of representation in our government. Um, the provision of Section 1 to 5 of this article, once invoked, shall cease to be operative not later than 30 days following the date the governor invokes the provisions of Sections 1 to 5 of this article, or on an earlier date recommended by the governor and determined by the Legislative Assembly. Two, prior to expiration of the 30-day limit established in subsection 1 of this section, the Legislative Assembly may extend the operation of Sections 1 to 5 of this article beyond the 30-day limit upon the approval of three-fifths of the members of each House. The governor may not invoke the provisions of Sections 1 to 5 of this article more than one time with respect to the same catastrophic disaster. This illegal executive action began in March, far beyond the 30 or even 60-day limits if Brown had bothered to convene the legis—legislature. Now, none of the orders have been for 30 days, and there have clearly been extensions issued for which none have been by the legislature. Um, bear with me. That's actually all I have to say for right now, because if you'll take the rest of the documentation that we have and read it thoroughly, we would really appreciate it.
Okay, we will.
Thank you. We sincerely appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Any other input from the public? Okay, we'll move into the business items. Uh, item number one, election of 2021 board officers.
I can't. I muted it.
I think she's still talking. I think she hung up. Okay, so, BCC 2021-001, background, as has been the practice, the chair position rotates among the three commissioners. The proposed chair for 2021 is Commissioner Murdoch, with Commissioner Schaefer as vice chair. Is there a motion on that?
I move for adoption.
Okay. Got a motion, is there a second? Okay, I will—
I second the motion.
You'll second the motion? Okay. Got a motion is—
Chairman—Chairman Schaefer?
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to divide the motion. Please make a motion to divide.
Okay, go ahead. But you've already seconded Commissioner Murdoch's motion.
Right. That's—that's how you divide a question. You have—you have to have a second before you can divide a question. So just—at this point, um, the motion on the floor is to divide the two questions, one for the chairman and two for the vice chairman. At this point, there cannot be debate. We just need to vote up or down on the motion to divide the question.
Okay, I'm not sure what you—I'm not following what you're saying. We have a motion already on the floor.
Yes, you—and—to—to divide a question, you have to have a second to that motion. I seconded the motion. So at this time, my motion is to split or divide the question.
Okay, so you're making an additional motion?
Excuse me?
Are you making an additional motion?
Yes, it's an additional motion. Anytime you divide a question, you have to wait till there's a motion and a second.
Okay.
At that point, you can divide the question.
Okay, so is there a second for Commissioner Doran's motion? Okay, hearing none, motion dies on the floor? So we go back to our original motion, which we have a second for. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Good, thank you—thank you, Chairman, um, Schaefer, for the floor. This, as some of the people in the—in the audience know, that this is no—no surprise to—to the commissioners. Um, I've, uh, floored this objection during the staff meeting and several others. But a little bit of background as we move forward on—on my comments. Yumitilla County is governed by a charter that was introduced and—and voted on by the public in 1993, and it has a supporting document. It has tenets, and then it has a supporting document called Procedures for the Conduct of Meetings of the Board of Commissioners, which was created by the Board of Commissioners. So going back to the first—first document, the board did—it says in the home rule charter—and this is, um, passed by the voters in 1993, and has been memorialized several times since. At its first regular meeting each year, the board shall designate one of its members as chair and one of its vice chair for that year. What that means is there's—there is no nomination of—of an officer. It is designated with the anticipation that the rotation will stay the same, um, and that's—and that's actually clarified in the Procedures for the Conduct of Meetings. So I brought this up and sent an email through, and, um, it was clarified that—that this practice and—and these tenets were going to be, um, modified. And so the reasoning given for that was, historically, a new commissioner is not an officer the first year. So obviously, that—that, uh, that reasoning and excuse does not hold water at all, because I'm not sure what historical references comment referred to, as our current chairman was designated vice chair in his freshman—you freshman year and chairman as a sophomore. Historically, there have been so many anomalies when we started office designation going back to 1974, which was the year that we got rid of, um, a judge for Yumitilla County and created three commissioners, which include requests to skip officer rotation, swap officer rotation, delay officer rotation, change of officer in midterm. There truly is not a simple trail without exceptions and consistency. However, in each case of modification and change, it was done with consent or without objection. There have been freshman commissioners, a officer, and officer of minimum need time. However, as close as I can calculate, 75% of the time, freshman commissioners were not in rotation as a common officer. History does have weaknesses, see? That is the rotation of officer design to make sure that you're qualified. Each area of the county has a voice in setting the schedule together every three years, depending on where that camp has been started. To that end, it is why commissioners' positions are numbered 1 through 3. These designations are the foundation for the rotation of officer commissioners, number one, followed by commissioner number two, followed by commissioner number three. Simple, effective, and confirmed by the guidelines we manage our county and commissioners' conduct, which include Procedures for the Conduct of Meetings of the Board of Commissioners and our Yumitilla County Charter. And we'll get back at both of those in a moment. With that said, in Yumitilla geography in mind, we are indeed in unprecedented and historical period of unbalanced of Yumy-Yumitilla County leadership, as noted by the following going back to 1975. Currently, a commissioner from the west side of the county has not held an office of chair in the previous six years, except for seven meetings in the beginning of 2019, before Chairman Elfrin turned the gavel over to Commissioner Murdoch. And the present officer's proposal stretches that streak to nine years. The previous streak record, three years. Currently, a commissioner from the same city has held the position of chair for three years in a row, and the presented proposal will stretch that streak to five years. Previous streak, two years. The current officer proposal will result in yet another record of the same two commissioners from the same city holding offices of chair and vice chair for three years in a row. Previous record, zero years in a row. I was elected as Yumitilla County Commissioner, position number three, by a majority of east Yumitilla County residents and a majority of west Yumitilla County residents. I have not been consulted or asked for feedback on the proposal by either commissioner, even though they were ultimately aware of my objections earlier and including at the staff meeting. Although I have noted specific regional disenfranchisement, the manipulation of officer rotation directly affects all of the county, and once again, involves a division of populace that many of us have tried to cure for many years. The Yumitilla County Charter specifically reads in Section 4, Meetings, "The board shall adopt rules for its meetings," and that that adoption is the procedure for the conduct of meetings of the Board of Commissioners. Section 1 of that document, Board Organization 1.010, as provided by the Yumitilla County Charter, the board shall, at its first regular meeting of each year, elect a chair and a vice chair from among its members. These positions will be filled each year on a rotating basis. The vice chair, 1.01.1. The vice chair from the preceding years shall be the chair-elect, and the other member of the board shall be vice chair-elect. If, however, the chair-elect should decline the position, or if the two board members cannot agree on his or her election as a chair, then the most senior board member in years of service shall be the chair, and the chair-elect shall fill the most senior board members. Now, this is the critical area of this. Similarly, if the vice chair-elect should decline the position, or if two board members cannot agree on the election, that doesn't mean that—that—and just side note, that means that you can't have a collusion in the background and, hey, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, and we're going to rearrange the—the rotation ahead of time for designation. This means it has to be done at the meeting, because it states, "Agree on election of the vice chair." So what that means is if—if these two commissioners truly have a path to achieve exactly what they're trying to do, and—and not—and not destroy our charter and our procedures, they had a path to do it, and yet gave them a thought, and—and declined that. All they had to do was follow the rules of the charter, designate Commissioner Murdoch as the chair, Commissioner Doran as the vice chair, made a motion to divide the question, and then not voted for Commissioner Doran, and it would have automatically put Chairman Schaefer in the chair and vice chair. There would be no objections to that, there would be no, um, charter, um, um—well, we'll get into that, too, because this is way beyond. So just to be clear, there was a path for the commissioners to get the same accomplishment and get to the same end, and they chose not to take that. Perpetuate this systemic centralization of agenda and Yumitilla County influence, these two commissioners from the same city will be the only two voting in favor of this continuation of unbalanced countywide leadership. I will not endorse it. Let's be clear, two commissioners voting together can pass any resolution or ordinance, and they will be well within their authority. That means that these two commissioners can do this, um, and—and—and there is nothing that stops them. However, let's also be clear that the manipulation will be blowing up not only the Yumitilla County Charter, but also will be set in precedent for many commissioners in the future. In fact, in fact, if this proposal passes, there is no limitation or guidelines left in either document that would prevent these two commissioners from using these harmful shenanigans to continue their two commissioner-officer rotation indefinitely until they leave office. Thank you for taking your time and respect, leaving perception motive out of the equation. Today is a sad day for the long, proud, dispirited Yumitilla County.
Commissioner Murdoch, did you want to address that?
I can't—I can't hear you, Chairman.
I was asking Commissioner Murdoch if he wanted to address that.
Yeah, I can't hear Commissioner Irwin. Thank you. I have a, uh, a written statement that I will submit for the record, but let me highpoint it. This is obviously not a discussion I particularly was excited to have at the first meeting, but since it's been raised and since we've been accused of shenanigans and a variety of other things, uh, I can't help but—but, uh, raise it, and I—I prepared it because I knew this was coming up. Um, several things. One is, it concerns me that—that it's been suggested that—that because two of us are now living in Pendleton, uh, we have somehow dispossessed of the remainder of the county. Uh, I—I kind of find this both divisive, and I also find it offensive. There's continued references to the county charter, but I have reviewed the county charter with legal counsel, and I can find absolutely no reference in the county charter that represents geographical representation. There's no memorialization of geographical representation in the charter. All commissioners serve large, representing the entire county. I think that—that this is divisive. Uh, I would point out, uh, at the same—at the time we're indicating, uh, that—that east side of the county—the west side of the county has been left out because of leadership on the east side. I would point out, uh, that from the east side of the county, we've had a partnership in creating the new Hermiston City Hall. We've had the development of a multimillion-dollar water recharge system in the west end. We've had a joint water tower system to provide for extension in North Hermiston. We've had an ambitious new joint economic development plan for the city of Yumitilla, and participate in efforts to continue fighting in Echo. All of those were initiated and supported by commissioners from the east side of the county. Um, I would also point out that Commissioner Schaefer was elected to the office of chairman while he was living in Athena. He has most recently moved to Pendleton, where he happens to live at the, uh, current time. I would also like to indicate that prior to 2013, Pendleton hadn't had a commissioner since Emile Holman retired about six or seven years prior to that. Uh, at the time I was elected, I was the first Pendleton commissioner in some years. It also actively disappoints me, now that Pendleton no longer serves place Hermiston, that—that we somehow keep perpetuating this east side/west side. And in my estimation, the people on the west side of the state don't give a rep about eastern Oregon, and I think we'd be better served to, rather than to be divisive, to—to work with, uh, both Hermiston and Pendleton, since there is nothing that says we aren't supporting the entire county. In addition, uh, I would point out, as was somewhat noted, Commissioner Elfrin was named was voted chairman of the board in 2019. Um, and on April 17th, he asked to step down for medical reasons, and, uh, the vice chair stepped up. At that time, Commissioner Elfrin was asked if he would like to be vice chair. He indicated he would not, so by default, Commissioner Schaefer, uh, was named the—the vice chair, because there was only three commissioners. Um, so he—he actually was still, yes, in his first year, a brand-new commissioner, but it wasn't like he became an officer on his first day as a commissioner. Um, I know there also are questions about, uh, the fact that—that some actions have been taken in advance, uh, including the appointment of liaison assignments. That actually is on the agenda for today. The only exception was the appointment of a CDA representative. And, uh, since we haven't voted on liaisons assignments, liaison assignments, um, and there may be concerns there, but—but I would call those out at a separate time. But as I say, I am extremely concerned that, uh, the idea that, uh, there is something somewhere, uh, that supposedly indicates that, uh, we represent different parts of the county, and the other parts of the county would not be represented by someone not living in that community, is certainly not a productive course to follow. So—and I have these in writing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, so I also have some, uh, comments that I drafted while—after the meeting on Monday. A few comments jumped out at me that I want to address. Uh, the first is that Commissioner Doran mentioned that I became vice chair as a freshman commissioner and rose to board chair as a sophomore. When I first took office in 2019, I be—uh, the board chair was Commissioner Elfrin, and the vice chair was Commissioner Murdoch. Following a medical necessity, Commissioner Elfrin has to step down as board chair, as you just heard, and didn't want to be the vice chair either. That left Commissioner Murdoch to rise to the board chair, and as the only other commissioner, I became vice chair during the April 17th, 2019 meeting. As a brand-new commissioner, I would not be in the rotation for the chair. As a first-year commissioner, was historically—a first-year commissioner would be too busy with county college and learning the ropes of the position. That's what was told to me, and I understood this and didn't think twice about it. I also heard Commissioner Doran make reference to the three area counties to be served by the chairmanship of the board. I have read the charter many times, and I have not seen any reference to this. In fact, this is the only thing the charter says about a residency requirement. "To be eligible"—this is quotes—"to be eligible to hold the position of county commissioner, a—" As a first-year commissioner, was historically, a first-year commissioner would be too busy with county college and learning the ropes of the position. That's what was told to me, and I understood this and didn't think twice about it. I also heard Commissioner Dorn make reference to the three area counties to be served by the chairmanship of the board. I have read the charter many times, and I have not seen any reference to this. In fact, this is the only thing the charter says about a residency requirement. "To be eligible," this is quotes, "to be eligible to hold the position of county commissioner, a person must be a qualified elector at the time of election or appointment, according to the state constitution, and must have resided within the county for 12 months immediately preceding the election or appointment," unquote. I like to think that whoever is the chair of the board will take into account the entire county, not just the jurisdiction in which they reside. Commissioner Dorn also brought up the fact that it's also been one commissioner representing all three districts in the county, while I disagree. When Commissioners Hansel, Givens, and Dorney made up the Board of Commissioners, Pendleton did not have representation at all. From the time Commissioner Emile Holman left office in December 2006, there was not another commissioner from Pendleton until Commissioner Murdock took office in July of 2013. For six and a half years, there wouldn't be a commissioner in Pendleton on the board. The charter does discuss the chair position, and this is what the charter says about that. Section two, Board Chair, "At its regular meeting each year, the board shall designate one of its members as chair, and one as vice-chair for that year." As you all know, this is the first regular meeting of the year for the Board of Commissioners. That being said, we do have a motion on the floor, and I would like to call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? George, I think you're muted.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, two to one. Thank you. Okay, number two on the agenda is Commissioner Assignments. Okay. This is B.C., the liaison assignments for 2021 is the requested action. The liaison assignments for the commissioners for 2021 are before the board for approval. The assignments are for Department Liaison and Community Benefit Plan Board Appointments. Commissioner Dorn would be Sheriff's Office, including Emergency Services, Courts and Court Security, Public Works, Natural Resources, Yumitilla County Fair, Co-op Extension, Adams Community Benefit Plan, and the Helix Benefit Plan for help. Commissioner Murdock would be Administrative Services, Assessment and Taxation, District Attorney, Finance, Legal, Human Services, Public Health, and the Echo Community Benefit Plan. Commissioner Schaefer, Community Justice, Human Services and Mental Health, Economic Development, Land Use Planning, CDA, DD, AWIR, and URS Board. Any questions on that?
I, I don't know whether you want to discuss it now or before the motions made, and what for amendments. How do you want to handle that, Chairman?
Well, we can go ahead and make a motion. I'd entertain a motion.
I would look to accept as presented the liaison positions.
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, if Chairman Schaefer, you were, I, a couple of things, actually total of three. One thing that went through early, I sent a request to include energy and renewables, and renewable energy, in either the public or to Council, and their recommendation, his recommendation was either Public Works or Natural Resources. I would like to, if this not add, energy and renewable energy to Natural Resources. Also, I sent an email through suggesting that we included transportation with Public Works. I didn't actually get anything back on that, but in this amendment, I would like to add transportation to Public Works. And on the CDA, I would like to be designated the alternate, the CDA program. That's all I have.
Okay.
And as a motion maker, I accept the amendments. Just need a second.
Well, I haven't-
I should have no response, because I did, I do have in my possession a lengthy list of requests from Commissioner elect Dorn, at the time requesting a number of assignments. I was under the impression that, that we had, in response to that list, and in responsive in writing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you're correct, Commissioner Murdock. I did get a response from Council on the energy and renewable energy. I also got a response on the CDA, and I'm asking that that response was inconclusive, and really, kind of just a vague response. I didn't understand, other than there were some concerns about, about the alternate creating a quorum, that that was taken care of when they recognized that Memorial County actually has a commissioner and a second commissioner as the alternate, and those are all public meetings also. So, I think, I think all of those concerns were taken care of, but that, that, this is my motion, so I, however you guys want to handle it.
So as far as the CDA is concerned, I, I requested that Gail retain the alternate position due to the fact of historical knowledge, and, because she's been serving in that capacity under Commissioner Elfrin, and I, I wanted her to continue in that role, so I'd have the institutional knowledge. Plus, with her role as Economic Development Coordinator, I felt that that was very important. And that's why we voted on that already, for the CDA position and liaison assignment, so.
Just to be clear, Chairman, I didn't vote on it.
Understood, this was prior to you being a commissioner. So, and this, that was at the December meeting, December 16th, I believe. Okay, so if there's not a second to your motion, I'd entertain a motion to, for this. I'm sorry?
I, I certainly, in regard to the clarification of the first two items, I do not have any particular concerns about them. I thought we already included them. With respect to, to the CDA position, I kind of deferred to Council on that, in terms of whether or not we can do it. I don't know that, that I have particular concerns on that, but, but I think since we have already voted on it, we, and passed that, we probably would have to bring it back as an addition to the agenda to overturn our previous decision, would we not? I don't think Doug's on here, but I think it's a legal question that, since it's already an action we've taken, if we intend to take a different action, would we not have to post it on our agenda and reconsider it at the next meeting?
I'll say that Chairman and Commissioner Murdock, I will remove my request for the alternate and leave the other two on the agenda, on the motion.
I have a problem with that.
I didn't, because I thought they already fell under the Natural Resources, so I didn't feel the need to include those on there, so.
That certainly could happen.
Okay, so could you clarify the motion for the record?
You made, the original motion was for the full list, and I, I made that motion, and, or I seconded that motion, and then I added as a request for an amendment to transportation to be added to Public Works, and the energy and renewable energy to be added to Natural Resources. I need a, we need a, an acceptance by the motion-maker, Commissioner Murdock.
Actually, I didn't make the motion. I was entertaining a motion.
I thought I just had to agree with the additions.
You did, that's all you have to do, yes.
I thought I already did that.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm looking for a second to Commissioner Dorn's motion.
Well, I can, I can read back the way, as long as you have an agreement from the motion-maker, Commissioner Murdock, the new motion would read, "The acceptance as of a liaison assignments presented with the addition of transportation in Public Works and energy and renewable energy in Natural Resources," is how the motion should read.
So we're, we're just simply incorporating those two items into Natural Resources, are we not?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second? He did second it? I didn't hear a second, okay. So if we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, Land Use Development Code Amendment. Okay, so, yeah, I'm going to suspend our regular meeting and go into public hearing mode. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is John Schaefer, and I am the vice-chair of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning Yumitilla Electric Cooperative's proposed text changes to the Yumitilla County Development Code that would incorporate the provisions of Senate Bill 408 to allow the creation of parcels to support utility facilities necessary for public service on land-zoned exclusive farm use as defined in Oregon law statute 215.213-1C and 215.283-1C. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in UCDC 152.750, 152.755. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition, or who have questions or concerns, will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony, but please, only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and your address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Are there any questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to staff. Is Mr. Walder on the phone?
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. Bob Walder, Yumitilla County Planning Director. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. The application before you, submitted by Yumitilla Electric Cooperative, proposes text changes to the Yumitilla County Development Code that would incorporate the provisions of Senate Bill 408, which was rolled in 2019. We'll give you a little bit of background about that. An applicant is on the line today. We have the consultant and the applicant to be able to answer any questions. But, Yumitilla Electric Cooperative worked through the Oregon Legislature in 2019, accomplishing the passage of Senate Bill 408. The intent of this legislation was to create a pathway for utility providers to achieve ownership of the land associated with their infrastructure without using more EFU land than is necessary, something not previously allowed under ORS 215-263. For UEC, this is related to the siting of substations and related infrastructure, but not linear facilities such as transmission lines, which do not require the creation of a new lot. UEC worked with thousands of friends of Oregon and the Oregon Farm Bureau to develop statutory liquid that is limited in scope and that prevents any parcel created under the statute from being rezoned later if the utility facility seizes to exist. The legislation is not self-implementing, and each county must individually adopt regulations for this purpose. In support of this, the applicant has submitted the required application and supporting documents that provide the proposed text changes within the Yumitilla County Development Code that will implement statute. Commissioner Schaefer highlighted the criteria of approval found in Yumitilla Development Code. Since this is a legislative matter, it has gone through a series of hearings. We met with the planning commission back on December 17th, 2020, and their recommendation was that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed change to the Development Code. In your packet, there is a set of preliminary articles in conclusion, the draft text amendment, and as well as the language found in Senate Bill 408, and testimony that was presented in support of that. Without, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, hearing then. I will now ask the applicant to testify.
I think that's me, morning, Commissioner Schaefer, members of the board. My name's Tommy Brooks. I'm an attorney at Cable Houston, or the legal team for Yumitilla Electric. I'm here representing, representing UEC. My address is 1455 Southwest Broadway, Suite 1500, and that's in Portland, 97201. You know, we really don't have much to add to this. I think I've positioned pretty well, and it's a, a, a bargain.
We're getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of feedback here. Hang on just a second. Is IT on the phone? Are they, are they listening? Can we have IT assistance in here?
It looks like they just muted Carla's line. She, I think, is joined by phone. Is that, can you give us a thumbs up, Carla, if that's correct?
Okay.
So I think we're better.
Okay, we're back, okay. Sorry. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I, I think Bob walked through everything that's really important about this. I'll just try to maybe hit on the highlights of sort of why we're here, and sort of the implication of this code change. You know, utilities like UEC have the benefit of being one of the few non-farm uses that are allowed in the farm zone. So it was odd to have a statute that said, while we're allowed to be out there by right, we can't create smaller parcels, even though other non-farm uses were able to do that. And what that meant was, for something like a substation, where we really need to own the underlying property, the facility, the utility facility takes up a lot more space in the farm zone than it needs to. So, you know, if you're limited to 80 or more acres on a parcel, but you only need, you know, five for a substation, it was just a mismatch with, with the use and with what was allowed on the farm zone. And so, it was sort of this unintended consequence, I think, of more EFU property being devoted to the utility use than was necessary. Yeah, so we started asking around, you know, other utilities in the state, see if they ran across the same thing, and they had. And it wasn't just electric utilities. I think water utilities faces a lot too, if they have a tower or reservoir out in the farm zone, but having to take a much bigger parcel than is needed. So, that was the genesis of the change at the state level to be able to do that. And I think if you look at the, at your packet, you've got the language of the legislative bill in there. It's a really targeted change. You almost can't see it. It was just a small addition and a cross-reference in the statute that just makes sure that utility facilities have the benefit of creating smaller parcels and leaving the rest of the parent parcel for the farm zone. But as Bob said, it's not self-implementing. It's more permissive, and each county needs to change their own code in order to be able to allow this. You know, at the end of the day, I think the last thing I want to point out is this does not change in any way the kinds of uses that are allowed in the farm zone, or limit the uses. Everything stays the same. It's just what the parcel underneath those uses looks like. And by doing this, we'll be able to sort of right-size the parcels that we're on, and make those smaller, and leave the rest for, you know, for the rest of the EFU uses. So, it's as simple as that. The only other change in the, in the bill is something that came from the Farm Bureau, just to, again, make sure there was no unintended consequences of our change, and it prevents rezoning of these properties based solely on the fact that they are going to be developed as a, as a utility, and that's some issues they'd run into with some other uses. So, most of that change is just more to, kind of a protection that was asked for by the- So most of that change is just more to kind of a protection that was asked for by the Farm Bureau. And I think this is indicative of how we work with them and with Thousand Friends. So with that, you know, we're here for questions. We got the UEC team, including, you know, our planning consultant and our lobbyist and our VP for Engineering. And if there's any questions, we can answer those for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna ask any persons in opposition or have questions or concerns. Now is your chance to speak. Okay, hearing none. Are there any in favor of the proposal? Okay, hearing none. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Just to clarify that they're not just muted and talking. What's that? Commissioner Don, did you have questions?
No.
Okay. All righty. Okay, with that, we will come back out of hearing mode and re-enter our regular meeting. Okay, we are back in regular meeting mode. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
The only comment I have is I thought it was well presented by Mr. Walder and the UEC representative.
Okay.
If we're gonna have a motion, I'm gonna defer to somebody within that realm of responsibility is not going to be me.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Here we go, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number four, audit presentation. Okay, so this is to accept fiscal year 2019-20 audit. The background, the presentation of the fiscal year 2019-20 audit will be made before the board. Do we have somebody to present that?
Hi, commissioners, can you hear me?
I can. Please identify yourself for the record.
Yep, my name's Cameron Anderson. I'm with Barnett Memorial in at 495 East Main Hermiston. And I'm the engagement shareholder for the audit of the June 30, 2020, Umatilla County financial statements. And just here to give a status update on the audit process. We've completed the audit and it's been submitted to the state. It's, we stated opinion on the financial statements. We've stated an opinion that we believe the financial statements are materially correct. It's an unmodified opinion, so that's good. That's what you would call or consider a complete audit. There were no significant findings, no federal findings. Appreciate Roberts and his staff getting us through this process. We actually did most of the auditing, if not all, trying to think, virtually and with documents being sent over. So a little bit different this year, but appreciate the additional work by Roberts' team. I didn't know if you guys wanted me to highlight some of the items in the financial statements or how you guys wanted to proceed on this.
I will defer that question to Commissioner Murdock.
Just know what hasn't been mentioned yet, that both Robert and I had the opportunity to participate in the exit audit. Both emerged satisfied with the results. We reaffirm the fact that we wanted to be made aware of any possible concerns on the part of our auditor so that we could make sure that we could make any adjustments or changes that would help with the integrity of our financial management. And again, I'm quite satisfied with what I heard during the exit audit. We also have a formal letter, I believe, has been shared with the board. The formal letter that Cameron wrote to us should be in the hands of the Board of Commissioners. So no, I don't feel a need to, although I thoroughly enjoy it, Cameron, I don't feel a need to go back through it.
And I do have that letter here, so.
If there is someone that wants them to go through it, that's fine. Otherwise, I believe we need an action to accept the presentation, do we not?
Yes, I do believe.
I would so move.
Okay.
And incorporated into that motion are thanks for his continued participation in working with the county. I think the historical perspective that Cameron brings to the auditing process in terms of being able to oversee our management over a period of time is beneficial.
I would second that motion and say to those, we appreciate Commissioner Murdock's comments and Cameron and his firm for their professionalism and the ability to perform such an audit. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Cameron. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, public health payable. And the background on this, this is, "Public health is seeking approval for the payment for additional advertising for targeted public notice for COVID education. The payable is before the board for approval due to the amount. The amount is over the 5,000 limit. Approval, approved payment to Diamante Media in the amount of $12,000."
Joe has appeared. I don't know if you noticed him, John.
I did not. I have a picture of the pinkie on the screen.
I see a picture of Joe now.
I do, too, now. I'm there. Did you want to address that, Joe?
Yeah, good morning. Joe from our Public Health Director. It sounds like some of the wording on some of that was a little off, so I just wanted to clarify. This is not so much for advertisement as it is for assisting with education promotion. This is a hourly radio show that a segment of the Hispanic-speaking population has been participating in a more, it's becoming more popular, we're told. And this is to, for us to sponsor and provide an avenue for questions and answers for Hispanic-speaking populations that we have trouble reaching. We're told, the way this typically works is this is provided a platform for folks to call in and share their experiences around hardships, wins, the challenges, et cetera, around COVID, as well as what we hope to soon be around COVID vaccinations. And we have committed to the station because of language issues and trouble for us to reach this population that any questions they collect, we will be able to provide answers to them in writing for their next week's airing so that as questions circulate in this population, this is another avenue for us to get that information out.
Fantastic. Now, this does not come out of general fund dollars, does it? Does this come from the?
Correct.
Okay.
This is coming out of the COVID response money that we've received from the states. Most of that, which came from the CARES package from the federal government originally.
Okay, I just wanted that for the record, that that was not general fund, so, okay. Perfect. Thank you for the clarifications on that.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Some of them.
Okay, man.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, number six, emergency declaration. Come on.
And the absence of Doug, this is, this is an extension of our emergency declaration. It's a fairly limited declaration, but it continues through, I believe, another 60 days. It's primarily focused on providing the financial liaison and the CFO the authority to make emergency decisions, if you will, primarily related to financial expenditures that need to be moved.
I do have the pinkie in front of me, if you'd like me to read that.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I don't.
Okay, it's BCC Order 2020-007. "The emergency declaration issued on March 18, 2020, due to the COVID pandemic, has been extended a number of times and currently is set to expire January 6 of 2021. The proposal is to continue the declaration for an additional 60 days to March 6, 2021. The remedies and powers provided by the declaration are continued to be needed to respond to the emergency." And then with your clarifications, that would be the background. So I would entertain a motion on that.
Some move.
Got a motion, got a motion and a second.
I'm taking it, John, since I'm involved.
Oh, do you want me to second that? I can second that. Okay, I will be the second on that, Melinda. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye? Motion, motion carries. Okay, COVID leave policy, number seven. The background on that. On April 1 of 2020, the county implemented a COVID, I'm assuming that means 19 emergency, it says COVID-10. So we're gonna call it COVID-19 emergency leave policy. The policy was in response to changes in federal law which had a limited time factor to provide paid sick leave for COVID-19 issues. The policy was to be effective until December 31 of 2020. The federal policy has been extended by Congress until March 31, 2021. The option to similarly extend the county policy is before the board for approval. So it would be approve and amend policy number 4.3B for COVID-19 emergency leave policy. I don't know if Jennifer's on the phone or not.
I'm on the phone. If somebody had any questions.
Okay, does it? Go ahead, Dan.
I'm sorry. Kevin Schaefer question?
No, go ahead. I was just.
Yeah. Kevin Schaefer question to Jennifer Blake. I guess my question, just being the new guy on the block, has there been a lot of participation in this program?
Yeah, absolutely. What this does, and Oregon similarly passed with the Oregon Family Medical Leave, the Corona Essentially Leave Act, it just doesn't provide pay. So the federal policy through December provided up to 80 hours of pay for people to be off when they had a Corona-related incident, and those were defined. It also allowed for some time off for daycare closures and school closures for parents as a result of the pandemic and the public health emergency. So pay for that ended with the federal package through the end of December, at the end of December. What we're proposing to do is to go ahead and extend that voluntarily through March. What this does is really allows us an avenue to not harm our employees, but keep a safe workplace. So when we have potential exposures or quarantines, that we're able to extend this additional paid leave to the people so that they aren't feeling like they need to be at work of whether they don't have balances or would like to not use their balances. So yes, I unfortunately have to report that it has been heavily used.
Yeah, that's disappointing. I'm totally for the program, Jennifer, without a doubt. And I know this is always a tough question when it comes to time off. Have we got an estimate what it may cost us?
I mean, that's hard, because, I mean, we would hope that we have no more infected people or no more quarantined people, and that's a really hard estimate to make. I'd be happy to.
No, no, that's fine. It's a fair answer, right? I understand.
Well, the cost primarily, Jennifer, is it not, is based on the fact that the value of their absence, not the fact we're hiring a substitute, isn't that correct?
Right, I mean, we're not expending additional dollars, but we are expending dollars for people to be paid while not working. Previous, I think the CARES money's run out at this point, but previous, we were able to get reimbursed for those funds. At this point, we're able to get a tax credit for our portion of FICA Medicare, which isn't a lot, but we are able to do that.
Well, the predominant reason we do it is related to having people remain home when they're ill. One of the biggest problems we had in the county in terms of our high tiers is people coming to work when they're ill. This, I believe, has enabled us to have some rather strict measures in place regarding the fact that we do not wish to have people coming to work when they're ill, and we make it more possible for them not to come to work when they're ill.
I agree, and George, and I think that's a great way to put it. I think Jennifer talking about the lack of production, actually, the biggest expense, I would agree. Thank you.
We have put a script in place, do we not, Jennifer, that you do not come to work when you're ill, and I think it's easier to do that when we accommodate it.
I would agree.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. I gave the policy number, is that? Yeah. Okay, item nine, Echo Community Benefit Plan. Oh, oops, sorry, I skipped one. Maintenance payable. Sorry about that, Mark. So the background is maintenance is seeking approval for the payment of glass and barriers installed at the courthouse and Stafford Hansel Government Center. The payable is before the board for approval due to the amount, the amount of CNH glass in the amount of $6,757.60. Mark?
Hi, it's Mark Tanner, Umatilla County Facilities Manager. So it's two December payables. One is for the bullet-resistant glass in the victim's support office. And that was matching what they had before due to the COVID modifications up there. And then the second was the glass at Stafford Hansel in the reception area to provide COVID protection and also a little more security so that someone can't just jump over the counter and get back there.
And just to be, for clarification, when you say the victims, that's due to the remodel on the third floor? Victims assistance? Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now let's try the Echo Community Benefit Plan. The background on this, in 2016, the Echo Community Benefit Plan Board recommended funding of the Echo Walking Trail project for $50,000, paid in two phases. The first phase of funding was approved by the board, and that phase has been completed. The second phase funding is before the board for approval. It's BCC 2021-004 to approve the grant and adopt that order number.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Echo Community Benefit Plan Committee Appointment. Background with the. Background, with the term of Commissioner Elfring ending, the county representative on the Echo Community Benefit Plan Board needs to be updated. The proposal is to have Commissioner Murdock to be the county representative. Requested action is to adopt BCC Number 2021-005. And I'm going to second that, so Commissioner Murdock doesn't have to worry about it. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The Help Board Appointment. "With the term of Commissioner Elfring ending, the county representative on the Helix Enhancement Launch Program Help Board needs to be updated. The proposal is to have Commissioner Doran be the county representative. Requested action, adopt Order Number BCC 2021-008." And I would make that motion, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hospital Facility Authority Appointments. Due to term limits, there are two vacancies on the Hospital Facility Authority Board. Joe Fiamara is proposed to replace Jim Setser, and Bill Elfring is proposed to continue on the board, replacing Tom Wamsley. The proposal also is to have Commissioner Doran to be the county representative. Requested action, adopt Order Number BCC 2021-006. And I would move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, it's a much coveted position, but unfortunately I'm turned out, or I'd go after it myself. During my tenure, we had a wonderful lunch each time, and that's the extent of it. But since I can't be there, I think Commissioner Doran will enjoy it.
He sure will.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to have lunch again in person, so.
Is it that what you said about the Health Department do at one point?
It could be. Okay. Item 13, Employee Commute Authorization. The background on this is the annual review and approval of employees allowed to commute in county-owned vehicles is before the board. There are two separate orders. One group is for law enforcement purposes, and the second is for employees responding to emergencies, non-law enforcement. The positions to be authorized are the same as 2020. So the first one would be BCC 2021-002, and that one is going to be for the law enforcement purposes.
I move, do we approve 002?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And also adopt Order BCC 2021-003. This will be for the non-law enforcement vehicles.
So moved.
The race is on. Okay, so it looks like, I think, Melinda just said Commissioner Murdock got there first. So Commissioner Doran, did you want a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on those, on that one? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we also, this is not on the agenda, but we had an issue come before the board, and I think it was a time-sensitive issue, if I'm not mistaken. It has to do with cameras in the jail, is that correct? I think, did I see Captain Hearn on the line? Okay. Captain, I have no documentation whatsoever in front of me, so I'm going to rely on you.
Okay, so this is Captain Doran Hearn, Yumitala County Sheriff's Office Corrections Division. We've had two of our points of view cameras in jail, seats to function, and our younger care period. So outdated, we can't get parts for them. So we got a bid for upgrading and installation of the two cameras, $9,534 and change.
So just over the $5,000 threshold, it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Quick question. I know that these are specialized cameras. Are the vendor, do you have the names of the two vendors that bid on it?
We just got one vote from Reese.
Is this considered a sole vendor, or whatever they call that?
Sole proprietor.
Sole source, sorry.
I'm not sure.
Is Robert Paul on? Does Robert know the answer to that? I see he's on the phone. I hear a car.
I am not certain whether it's a sole source. Thorne said they are the primary provider that they've used in the past and that they haven't found anybody competitive in the past. I consider it a security issue, and certainly I'm in favor of this purchase.
I move to approve the purchase of the security cameras for the jail on an emergency basis.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Okay. If I can get to the agenda. Looks like we have reached the end. Is there any Commissioner comments, Commissioner Murdock?
No.
Commissioner Doran?
Yeah, I might as well start and end the meeting the way I started it. I do appreciate everybody's comments, and I think all of us understand that none of this is personal. But I do think that what we went through today really highlights the fact that we need to make sure that we have procedures, Commissioner procedures, a manual. Many counties do, I've actually received some already. So I would like to see, and I will not object to taking the lead on the project, to see if we can't put a Commissioner's manual together, policy and expectations manual, that would include things like the document that we kind of blew up today, the procedures manual, that supports our charter. Again, I think that we have a lot of work to put MUDD back together again after today's vote. And I definitely will take, without objection, a lead trying to put together that information so that we can all review it together and maybe put together a manual so the next Commissioner-elect doesn't have to go through exactly what happened today. And then number two, thank you, everyone, for welcoming me to the Commissioner position. I know we're back to the charter issue. We'll start putting together that charter review committee at the end of this year. And I look forward to having that review done again so that we can actually have some clarity to some of the questions that came up in my mind early. But we can get a manual put together, a policy and expectation manual put together way ahead of that that Doug and all of us can work on. But again, thank you, and I made it all the way through one meeting.
All righty.
I think I might add to that, based on the fact that it might be well to, what Commissioner Doran experienced was considerably more deference to the new Commissioner than I experienced. I can assure you, I got the ancient Malibu, the back office, and the assignments that nobody else wanted without any input whatsoever. So I think there's certainly some benefit to having some procedures in place that provide consideration to the new Commissioner, not just based on what we perceived this morning, but what's happened before. And I'm not sure, quite honestly, Commissioner Shafer, how much input you've got either.
It wasn't very much, so, and I was pretty much told, welcome here, the new guy, here's your assignments, so. But yeah, so.
Hey, I appreciate those comments, and I think that working together, we can actually put that manual and policies together, probably within even three months. As long as you guys let me flood your eyes, somebody else does, I'll be good.
Well, we used to have, we used to take time sometimes at our staff meetings to have an opportunity to have sessions where we discussed internal procedural issues that helped us get past some disagreements. And we're not going to, we're never going to be totally in agreement, but certainly with an opportunity we haven't done for a while to discuss if there are festering issues.
Well, hopefully we can get back to having those meetings in person again, so, instead of virtual. I think there is a certain element that is lost at the virtual level than in person, so. And I have no comments to make either, just, Dan, welcome to the team, so, as I've said many times. And it looks like the music's queuing our way out. So with that, we are adjourned.